I'm sorry, it's me. My laptop has taken on a life of its own. I'd like to call our October Board meeting to order. If you would please join us and our guests in the pledge of allegiance. Hey, thank you very much for your help. We'd like to welcome everyone that's with us this evening. We've got students back in the house for the first time this year, so this will be a lot of fun. We're excited about that. Could I get an adoption of tonight's agenda, please?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 2.01, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board of Education, everyone here. I got, my first one's pretty exciting. As you know, we have the current state teacher of the year. We have the current fax state teacher of the year. We have a foreign language teacher as one of five finals for national foreign language teacher of the year. So we're going to add to that list this week, and that's Lisa Mott R7 Counseling Department had two people in the top five of counselor of the year, and those were Stacy O'Connell at Lisa Mott High School and Molly Boike at East Trails Middle School. And then we announced last week, it was announced, well actually two weeks ago, that Molly Boike is the state counselor of the year, so kudos to Molly. And next, with this sticking to the counselor of the year part, Lisa Mott High School's counseling team also earned the Dr. Norman C. Geisberg's nationally-recognized Missouri program, known as the Norm Award. So congratulations to everyone. Congratulations, Lisa Mott Norris Yearbook Team. They were selected for the Walsworth Gallery of Excellence for the third year in a row. The gallery showcases standout yearbooks to inspire staff and provide examples of scholastic journalism across the state. And then, as you see, Longview Farm is our program, but just recently they celebrated their 20th anniversary with an open house. Thank you to everybody in the community who came out to enjoy music from the Stallion Singers, see the school, and hear more about the history of the building. And thank you to some community members who were involved in a unique award-winning project to create a farm, a horse barn if you will, into Longview Farm, including like David Gale and such who spoke at that event. So I appreciate that. Several updates, I won't necessarily go through all those because you've seen those many times. I've also talked about them in previous months, and they're also in our R7 newsletter. But I also want to kind of give you an update that, I know we have, this is a busy time of the year. You have concerts, you have plays, but we also have fall sports. Some have already started their playoffs, some are going on right now. Softball's going on today, and some are starting this weekend, some are starting in the next week or two. So kudos and good luck to all of our sports teams and our actors and singers and band performers, as well as their coaches and sponsors. Wish you nothing but the best of luck. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Our first presentation this evening will be from Longview Farm Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Orr, and it is my privilege to be the principal at Longview Farm Elementary School. This is my second year. I want to also thank the board for having us here tonight. I guess we're kicking it off tonight with the first group of the year, which is fantastic. So I also appreciate their support for our 20th anniversary celebration last week. It was a wonderful event. With us tonight, we have our Run for Fun Club, and the leader of our Run for Fun Club is Mr. Garvin, who is one of our third grade teachers. Oh yeah, give him a round of applause. And I think he's got a short presentation that he's going to show about our Run for Fun Club. So Mr. Garvin?
Sorry. Alright, so I've been doing Run for Fun for over seven years now. I enjoy it. It's really good exercise for the kids, for me. Definitely takes the energy out of some of the kids before they come to class, which is a really good thing. But I want to show off some things. I took pictures of this year of a track that we got this year that's been very beneficial for the kids, for the community, even for staff members before school even starts. I'll go ahead and go to the first picture. This track starts at the playground right here, and it goes all the way around the soccer field the kids love to play on. And when we got this track, it was exciting news because we used to run around the outside of the school, which was, we would have to go across streets, just like an entranceway to our school. And that, at times, would create difficulties, and we'd have to stop the kids if cars were coming in. And I always asked about possibly getting a track because I saw tracks at different schools. And finally, Mr. Orr and the district were graciously enough to go ahead and get that ball rolling and got it rolling this summer, and it moved quick. And it was so awesome how everything came to be. So this is going to be a- Okay, countdown with me. Three, two, one, go! So, with this track, definitely benefits the kids. They, I, every day I've gone out there to pick up my kids from recess, I see kids walking the track, talking with their friends, or just taking a walk. It's better sometimes than just sitting down. It's just taking a walk and thinking about it. And then, these pictures are just of my run club having fun out there, running with their friends. Some with parents that come and volunteer for my club, which is very nice to have parent volunteers come in and help me with the kids. But I, again, I can't say how awesome it is that we got this track at our school, and I'm very appreciative, and the kids love it. They've been using it every day. And then, that's a fun picture of us at the, our last day of the club for this fall. So, thanks again, everybody, for having us here. The kids were super excited to come tonight and be in front of a lot of people. They were a little nervous, but so was I. But, but again, thank you guys so much for the track at LFE. We really do appreciate it. So, thank you.
I think the board would like to take a picture with all you guys. Is they okay with that? The board comes, stands behind you? You stay right where you're at, and the board will come behind you. Alright?
And with our, with that, I have one more thing I want to do before everybody leaves. I have the honor of handing out the Longview Farm Volunteer of the Year Award, and I believe that this may be a surprise to this person. So Jesse Resch, could you come up here, please? So, and by the look on Jesse's face and the way she stood up, it is definitely a surprise. So Jesse, if you would come over here, you are the Longview Farm Volunteer of the Year. So- So congratulations, yes, congratulations. So Jesse does a wonderful, you know the thing, and I was thinking about, what am I going to say about Jesse tonight? You know, I'm going to keep it really short. I'm going to say Jesse brings energy and excitement and just a lift in our building culture every time she's there. She's, she's reaching out to teachers to try and find ways to help. She's bringing things in for teachers to keep their spirits up, and it just, she's a wonderful, she's a wonderful addition to our building, and so it's really awesome to have her. So, yeah, so thank you, thank you.
Jesse, we're going to have you come up with the board as well and take a photo. Alright, our next presentation tonight will be from Campbell Middle School.
Good evening. I lodge my protest every year about having to follow the elementary, and it does not get taken seriously. So, I'm not going to get my hopes up at any time. Always try to have a little bit of icebreaker when I come here and speak, but the ice is kind of breaking on me because one of the students that's going to actually talk tonight, I had her mother in my classroom at Campbell Middle School a long time ago. So, that makes me feel really young and spry. But, without further ado, we really want to highlight a group that highlights us every year, right? And they get overlooked a little bit, but it's our yearbook staff, our yearbook program. And I'm going to have Dr. Fogel come up. She's our activities director, and she helps cultivate these programs and make them better and support them. So she's going to talk a little bit about the program, and then have the sponsors and some kids talk about it as well.
Alright, thank you so much. I'm so excited to be able to honor this program. Our sponsors are amazing, and it's something that sometimes gets overlooked, but they truly do inspire all of our students. They don't just oversee the yearbook. They truly inspire these students. One of my favorite stories just this year is we had our cross-country meet, and a student was standing at the gate, and he had a media pass. And he walked up to that gate and was like, "I have a media pass, I can get through." And sure enough, he's running the course all over to take all those pictures. So, they just motivate, they teach, and I'm really, really happy to work with them. So I'm happy to introduce Ms. Yoder and Ms. Lehman. Can you come on up?
I'm Amy Yoder. I'm one of the co-advisors of the Bernard Campbell Main Event Yearbook staff. This is Tara Lehman. She's my co-advisor. And we are so lucky, we get to work with 24 of the most amazing students who, in addition to, you know, excelling in school, participating in all kinds of activities, they also take on working on the yearbook, which is truthfully a lot of work. We're really proud of our yearbook. We've actually brought a copy of our last year's yearbook for all of you. So, Mrs. Lehman and one of our yearbook staff members, Maeve Dawson, is going to pass that out to you. And then, I've got Lily Freeland and Harlow McKee, who are just going to tell you a little bit about what we do on the yearbook staff.
Hello. I am Lily Freeland, and I'm in 7th grade. I'm here to talk about all the ways the Bernard Campbell Middle School staff collaborates to create the yearbook. Making this yearbook was a team effort, and we couldn't have done it without the hard work of our staff. Our staff consists of 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. About half of our staff have been on the yearbook for two or three years, and many of us plan to continue our yearbook careers at Lee Summit North in the future. The Bernard Campbell Middle School Yearbook Committee is very student-led. We spent so many hours putting this together, making sure every page captured the spirit of our school. Whether it was going through all 300 pictures from the recent Pinkout game, signing up for spreads, learning to use a 35-millimeter camera, or interviewing our peers, it was all us, the students. Some decisions we get to make range from things as small as what to name the cameras, to voting for the actual yearbook theme, color scheme, and font package. One unique thing about our yearbook is that our cover is designed by, is student-created by 8th grade art students. Even students who aren't on yearbook staff get to be a part of the creation of our yearbook. This book isn't just a collection of photos. It's a collection of memories, from field trips to pep rallies and everything in between. These pages are filled with moments we want to remember. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Harlow McKee. I'm in 7th grade, and I'm here to talk about how the yearbook program helped me find my place at Bernard Campbell Middle School. Like many other students, when you first come to middle school, you don't know very many people, and you're not really sure where you fit in. But then, I joined yearbook in 6th grade. Everything changed. Being a part of the yearbook staff gave me a purpose and a community. I learned how to tell stories, capture memories, and celebrate the people around me. I worked with fellow students I might never have met otherwise, and we built something meaningful together. Yearbook gave me more than skills. It gave me confidence, friendships, and a sense of belonging. I'm proud of what we've created, and even more proud to say that I found my place here, behind the camera, on the page, and with the staff. Thank you.
They did a fantastic job. I think one of the, my most favorite thing is when Scal's in the office, he never has his door shut. But when it's time to be the preview, he's the first one that gets to preview those covers. Those doors are shut. It's top-secret information. So, I think that's the most exciting is to see the covers that they get to pick. Alright, I'm really excited. I have the honor to introduce our volunteer of the year. This is our second year at Campbell, working with them. This is their third year in Lee Summit, helping with this program. This is the Back to School Bash, and it is a leadership committee that puts this on. And it's something that they reached out to see if they could use Campbell, and of course, anything that helps our community is, will always open our doors to. This year, they raised around $30,000 of school supplies, and they work really closely with us. They asked what our supplies list were, and they were very specific on what our school needs. It's opened up to the whole community. Not only do they do supplies, we have a fun time feeding them, and they also provide clothes. And then my favorite thing is the haircuts. We have like 30 people that were cutting hair this year, and it's amazing what we did in two hours. So I really want to thank you, appreciate you. And so here to just be here to take the award, so back to the leadership team and bragging rights on having the plaque, we have Sherri Henning and Adam Foster. Thank you so much, you guys.
Okay, next item on the agenda is item 4.01, public comments. And we don't have any this evening, so we'll move on to item 5.01, board committee reports. Dr. Nickens.
This month, attended my second CAC meeting. It will be definitely interesting. We've taken the recommendation from the LSC Westview Pratt, and that's what will, our starting point. I also attended the Board Policy Committee.
Excellent. Board member Garrett, sorry.
Thank you. Well, this, starting last month, actually, it was right after our last school board meeting. But I attended on behalf of the Lee Summit Educational Foundation, volunteering at Pleasantly Elementary School for the birdhouse build project. And I believe thanks to Dr. Buck that, Dr. Buck, that that was started. And so I had a really good time. You know, hoping to kids out there. I got familiar with tools, which I never, not really a tool person, but, so that was fun. And then, I also had this month, the Lee Summit Educational Foundation Race for the Future, and we had quite the turnout last Saturday. So that was a lot of fun. And then, yes, or I guess it was this week, we had the joint meeting with the city council, and talking everything about, you know, property, or not property, but I guess we're, we're building new, land I should say, that's the word I was looking for. So, new land development and our school district. So just kind of collaborating with the city council and learning about what they're talking about, and they're learning about our school district. So it was a good, a good thing that happened. So, thank you.
Excellent. Dr. Johnson?
Okay, so I don't have any committee board reports, except I did go to the joint city council, school board meeting. And I want to say that there's this app out there called LS Connect. You guys should get on it. You can send all kinds of requests to the city, if you don't know about it. I'm just now learning about it. I'm putting in requests in for a stoplight somewhere, but yeah, just, it was an excellent meeting. It was an excellent format. We did like a roundtable discussion, was able to give the city council some information that was important for the school board, and vice versa, them giving information to us that was very important. And that joint effort really just shows how our community is working together.
Thank you. Board member Dawson?
I also attended the joint session, and I agree with the comments already made, that it was a really productive meeting and informative. But I also attended the finance committee meeting on Tuesday, and the board policy meeting on Tuesday as well. And I know I probably say this every month, but I want to thank everyone from all the departments who participate in those, who prepare everything ahead of time, and who answer my questions, my many questions in those meetings. And I just appreciate all the work that the folks do getting ready for those meetings, and all the information they bring to us.
Vice President Miller?
Okay, I was able to tour with President, President Myers and Dr. Buck. We went and toured Hangar 2, which is where our new aerospace academy is going to be housed. So, we got an incredible tour from Colin McKee and Dr. Bonnison. And when I tell you, we are preparing our students for the future every day in all the programs that we offer, this was a prime example. We got to sit in the simulator and drive a plane, and these are things that our students get to do. So if anybody ever asks you or questions what we're doing here in LSR 7, and how incredible our staff is, and all of our admin that are making these things happen on a daily basis, you can tell them, our students are being prepared for the future, period. So, it's just, just, I'm just fascinated. And not just our students, because the thing with the aerospace, the hangar, it's open to- 44 high schools. So, just incredible. So I just, I'm just amazed anytime I see all the work that is being done to prepare our students for the real world. And like my other colleagues, I went to the joint session with the city, which I told Dr. Buck and the rest of the board, that is my favorite work session of the year. It's so much fun to just learn and to be in the midst of the city council and just really understand, like Dr. Johnson said, just the incredible partnership that we have. So, that's all.
Excellent. So, I too got to take the tour of the new hangar. And I was the one that got to fly the simulator into the Missouri River, which was a barrel of fun. And the one I was in is the one that like the chairs shake, and the roof rattles, and everything, you're like, whoa, what's happening? And Vice President Miller was just hanging on because I was taking this right in the river.
We have a video of this. So if anybody wants to see, there's a video footage.
What, it was, it was an amazing facility. I, I left there thinking, holy cow. Committee-wise, the CAC meeting that Dr. Nickens has already referenced, and we had that, our second meeting of the year. I also attended the CAC Steering Committee meeting, where we are kind of sorting through the questions and some of the things that had come out of the CAC meeting in preparation for our next meeting, which is in a couple of weeks. And then, the joint session that we participated in with the city council that I found to be really extremely helpful, the presentations were spot-on, and the sense that we're really kind of all on the same team here, and we need to work together, and we do need to talk to each other. It was, I found it to be a very, very beneficial meeting, and I left there just really, really feeling blessed that, you know, college graduation led to Lee Summit. I don't quite know, you know, it was a long time ago, but I'm really glad that this is where we landed. So, anyway, those are my, those are my committee reports for this month. Okay, we'll move on to item 6.01 then, to, we need to approve the transfer of funds. Could I get a motion?
I move to approve the transfer of $4,585,481.58 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'd also like to thank board member Dawson for going to those meetings and asking all those questions for me. Okay, item 6.02, could I get a motion?
I move to approve the treasurer's report and the payment of the bills.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's see, we have an item for discussion, 8.01, the Mid-America Head Start Contract. Full disclosure, this was on our consent agenda, and I am the one that asked to have this pulled for some, some dialogue. Board member Dawson?
Yeah, so, the reason I think we wanted to discuss this further, and I know I, I would have asked to pull it if, if Dr., if, if President Myers hadn't already, is because of the government shutdown, November 1st is the day that this program would, what we're agreeing, the contract we're agreeing to sign, which would have started on November 1st, might not necessarily be funded on November 1st. So, Dr. Buck, if you would like to share with, with the board and with those watching, a little bit of the context for that.
So Head Start is a federal, national program. Many communities, Head Start is now associated with school district. In the Kansas City metro, there are some districts that are, and some districts are not. Doesn't mean Head Start doesn't happen in our communities, it's just whether districts involve. Mid-America Regional Council is the funding source for Head Start. The funds flow through them from the federal government, and this is a contract with them to run Head Start over Great Beginnings Paradise Park for us. The federal fiscal year runs November 1st to October 31st, very different than our fiscal year, which is July 1st to June 30th. We serve 68 part-day children and families in our facility, as well as 20 home-based children and families. And the funding that we receive for that is $561,657. But as you stated, with the government shutdown effect continues past November 1st, they have no dollars to allocate to that. It is believed we will get refunded in arrears after the budget's passed, but there's no guarantee that, that that would happen. But we've also been serving these students since the beginning of the year. So we would, and so has every other district who is receiving funds from Mark that I've talked to. I've talked to several of them. They are also going to continue services starting November 1st, even if funding's not available, because it's the right thing to do for, for us, for 88 kids. So we will continue to do so. to do for, for us, for 88 kids. So, we will continue to do so. If that was never funded, that would be a loss of, not all the $561,657 would be on this fiscal year budget, because three months of it would be on next year's fiscal budget, but 75% of it, on, you know, just rounding off on average, would be on this year's fiscal budget, and it would be a hit to our reserves, after we've already had some other hits to our reserves. So, just want everybody to go in eyes wide open, but it's the right thing to do by kids, and we do believe this funding will be there eventually.
Dr. Johnson?
So, some of my questions were, one of them, let's say we move forward with this, which I think it is the right thing to do by kids, absolutely, have we already started thinking about where this money comes from, to make up the difference?
Literally would be out of reserves. So, right now, we're going to keep it coded the way it is, coming from reimbursed to Head Start, because again, we believe the funding will be there. If it didn't, we would have to re-code it, but it would be coming out of reserves. It would not be supplanting other things. If it was never funded, then we'd have to have serious conversations about what to do for next year. But that would give families and us plenty of time to make a right decision, because going from Halloween Day to November 1st, that's a pretty quick turnaround to say, you're here today, you're not here tomorrow.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Did you have any other question?
I do.
Yeah, I know. I thought you had more than one.
That's it for now.
Okay. Board Member Dawson?
Yeah, so, Dr. Buck, can you clarify, when you say that we're going to take the money from reserves, worst case is that we would need the entire half million, but hopefully that's not going to happen. But, if, if we were all the way at worst case, how, what percentage of the reserves is that? Just to give people like a context.
Dr. Herzog, you want to give a round guess? I mean, it would be, it would be less than 1%.
Okay.
Is that good enough? I mean, I'm trying to figure out 0.7%, 0.6%?
I was trying to kind of put it in perspective for folks who heard that. And then, the other question I have, I know you shared with, with us, but if you could share the number of students affected by this?
So, 68 part-day children that come to us, as well as 20 home-based children.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions?
I guess I should. I assumed everybody, this is pre-K. These are, these are students in, before kindergarten, who meet a certain set of qualifications set out by the federal government.
Dr. Johnson?
Okay, I do have an additional question, and it's more of like a budget question. So, we talk about having a balanced budget. So, at the end of the year, we're zero. That balanced budget includes the reserves?
Balanced budget would be expenses and revenue equal. That's what we shoot for. Percent reserves, if your budget goes up, your percent reserves can come down, and you have a balanced budget, because it's a bigger number. And if your reserves stay the same, it's a smaller percent.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, could I get a motion, then?
I move to approve the, I move that the board approved the Head Start agreement as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Last thing we have, we've got written reports from Westview Elementary, East Trails Middle School, the gifted program evaluation, and we've got a C-SIP quarterly update in your written reports. Alright, I think this concludes our business meeting for this evening. Have a good one.